I want to say that we're ready to kick school off for another great year. It's been fun talking to principals and just hearing, I still think just the level that we're staffed at is still making a huge difference to hear them going into the second year of that, and I'll speak a little to that. It's neat to hear principals talk about, I only lost one staff member, I only lost two staff members, and the momentum they have going into the year, so very excited about that. I do want to, I do want to point to a sheet you have on your table, which is an impact sheet, and I want to spend just a little time talking about this because this is the time when data starts coming out, just to get a little view of some of the things that have happened. I know we talk about data, but this is, this is kind of good data because it's kind of a summary of work for the past couple of years, and just wanted to point to some of that as we go into the new year, to tell you why we're excited. For the unprecedented fourth year in a row, fourth year in a row, students made gains across every subject area. Since 2001, just want you guys to hear this because this is a pretty big deal, since 2001 proficiency rates in math and ELA have increased by more than 10% across the board. And I know we go, well, it's 10%, right? But that's a, that's a big deal across the board.
You said 2001?
I'm sorry, well, it's only taken us 20, 23 years, Reverend Butler, that should be pretty good. We like incremental gains. No, 2021, thank you for that correction, 2021, proficiency rates in math and ELA have increased by over 10%. We also celebrated over 4,200 graduates in May, that's a big deal. Our graduation rate is hovering around 91 to 92%, and we're seeing increases across every student subgroup. I think that's what's been so impressive about our grad rate staying up, is we're seeing our, all of our subgroups, our BHN, Black Hispanic Native American, our low socioeconomic, our sped, all of those rates are going up, this just speaks to the work that our folks are doing. Thanks to the 865 Academy, this is a neat thing too, the average graduate also earned approximately three EPs, early post-secondary opportunities, and for those of you who don't know what those are, that means AP course credits, dual enrollment credits, industry certifications, so not only are they graduating, but they're graduating ready to show that they're, you know, they've done something while in high school to be ready to do that. That's a lot, again, back to our 865 Academy. I've been with the district for more than 20 years, and I can't remember another time when we've seen this level of momentum. Typically, unfortunately, we go up two points and then back a point, up two points, so these kind of back and forth in these areas, but to see these kind of stacked four years in a row is something I haven't seen. These results speak to the work of Dr. Phillips, who you'll get to hear from in a second, who's leading in excellence in foundational skills, and her team's unwavering commitment to ensure every student has access to high-quality, grade-level instructional materials. They also reflect the work of the impact of the 865 Academies and the leadership of Shannon Jackson and the College and Career Readiness Team. It's amazing to think, just four years ago, the 865 Academies were only an idea on a piece of paper that we were talking about, and the fact now that they exist in all 14 high schools and will have our first senior class this year that's been through that is pretty amazing. We know that we have the right people on our team, and we know that the strategies are working. It's been neat to see people take ownership as this data comes out, too, that they know they're doing that in their classroom every day, and there's nothing, as a teacher myself, that's more encouraging to see your kids have that kind of impact and know that that was the work you did. So I think a lot of folks are centered on that right now. This one's cool, too, I can't say too much, but I'll, I'll say this as a, how about as a teaser for later in the month. We learned today from the state that our student growth data reached a level that we have not seen in over a decade in Knox County schools. That data's embargoed for now, but I'll just tell you that by the end of the month, we'll be celebrating these, these results in a big way. The task is now not only to maintain that momentum, but to accelerate it. I think that's what's encouraged me, too, when you talk to principals and they're seeing these gains, and talk to teachers, you know, they talk about, like, they really are just getting started, like, this is not, you know, we had a great data sweep, or certain kids didn't take the test, they're going, I was at Austin East this Saturday with a group and saw Dr. Spies, and, and they made incredible gains this year, and he said, you know, John, the funny thing is, all we've done right now is really kind of align things, we haven't really dug in yet to get what we need to do. So that's really encouraging for our kids moving forward to hear, hear principals and teachers have that idea. So the recent change, I was going to say this, too, so having the right people in the right places and having the right plan is extremely important. I want to address the recent change to the Gifted and Talented Program. It's a good example of one of the many ways that we're challenging ourselves to think differently and to think more intentionally about the work that we do. As you know, we didn't go into the summer expecting the federal funding freeze, but our team, it did cause our team to have to work rapidly to reorganize resources within the district office, to ensure that we would be in a position to meet the needs of schools and students before the start of the school year. This means that the support of our academic, the support for our academically advanced students will be led by the Teaching and Learning Department under Dr. Phillips. She now has all, a lot of the members of the former GT team on her team now as well. So moving forward, they will serve as content area coaches in math and ELA, ensuring that teachers receive the proper support they need to continue to grow every student, whether they need academic intervention, tier-one instruction, and that's just regular instruction for people who aren't educators, tier-one's like what everybody gets, or academic enrichment. So for students and families, the new model will mean more frequent access to academic enrichment. Rather than once-a-week pullouts, academically advanced students will be exposed to more rigorous small-group instruction, and will have access to challenging materials designed to stretch and grow their academic strengths. I've asked her, I've asked Dr. Phillips to come to the podium after I finish my remarks to give a little more information on that, and also potentially answer a few questions. But I'm excited about the new plan, it makes sense, we do that for our students who are behind and struggling, they have a small group while instruction's going on, they get challenged every day to overcome those interventions. Now our advanced students will get that same chance, to be able to be in smaller group for instruction in elementary, to get challenged on a day-to-day basis, which will be good for us. Shifting gears, I also want to highlight that we'll be kicking off the school year with our annual Safe Schools, Safe Students event tomorrow at 10 o'clock AM at West Hills Elementary. This is a great time to recognize the people who work hard every day to protect our students and our staff, to recognize the support we receive from our law enforcement and government partners, and it's also an intentional reminder that safety and security is always our top priority. We'll be talking about our core safety strategies. First, having a highly-trained armed officer in every school, individual, second, individualizing safety plans to meet the unique needs of each of our schools and their environments, and third, a commitment to make every threat, take every threat seriously, and encourage every member of our community to say something if they see something. This has served us well in the past years, and we'll continue to reinforce that as we start the year this year. We'll also talk about our approach to, our safety continues to evolve, and how we're adapting to the challenges our students and staff face every day. Chief Grunio will be there as well, and as the team tomorrow, look forward to that, we'll have KPD and a lot of other law enforcement agencies there with us as well. I'm also excited to share that we launched our new district website on July the 23rd. Two years ago, I asked our communications team to reimagine how we engage with families and to share important information. This new website is an example of that effort. It represents two years of work shaped by numerous rounds of feedback from staff, students, families, and community partners. The address for the district site hasn't changed, but you'll notice that website content and navigation has been significantly revised to make it much more family-friendly. As part of our rollout to the district website, all staff-specific resources have been moved to an employee intra, or internet, the KCS intercom. This means that staff also now have a one-stop shop for all the resources and tools that they need to effectively do their work every day. Our communications team is applying the same lens of intentionality and focus on families to the rollout of our new school websites, which will take place over this fall semester. And in the spirit of, when you, when you pull something off this big, it takes a lot. So in the spirit of continuous improvement, we continue to ask anyone who has feedback to share, please use the link at the top of the pop-up form when you go to our website. So if you go on, there's a pop-up that asks, you got a chance to go in and ask questions or give some feedback as well. So again, it's, it is an amazing site, very visually pleasing, a lot easier for to kind of click on and find things that you want to find, so we hope that helps our families too. Finally, in closing, I want to thank Mayor Jacobs for hosting his annual School Mania. I had the privilege of helping distribute more than 3,000 school supply bags at the main drive a couple of weeks ago. Then on Saturday, our faith-based organizations across the county distributed another 5,000 bags. Thank, want to thank the mayor and all the volunteers who helped with that, that's always fun. I had one person, when we were passing out the bags, I reached in to put the bags in, and she asked me, she said, are you the superintendent? And I said, well, I don't know, is he doing a good job? And she said, yeah, and I said, of course I am, I took my sunglasses off. So you always want to be careful when you answer those questions, for sure. But thank goodness, there was one person who thought we were good. So, Madam Chair, that concludes my report. Thank you for the opportunity. With that, though, I would like to ask Dr. Phillips, before I turn over the mic, to come share a few words about our future of our academic enrichment program. Dr. Phillips?
Awesome. Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Reiswick. It's my privilege to be able to speak to you tonight about the plan and the transition from our GT department to supporting our advanced learners. In recent weeks, the Teaching and Learning Department, the Special Education Department, and the Talent and Acquisition Department have been collaborating, collaborating to refine how KCS provides our advanced learners with academic services that meet their unique needs. Our goal is to align services for advanced learners with rigorous instruction that all students in KCS receive by integrating instruction in both tier-one and intervention. So let's talk about what's changing. Previously, under the former, former model, students with advanced learning needs received those services through the Gifted and Talented Department. Now, those students will be supported by the Teaching and Learning Department. As Dr. Reiswick already mentioned, our former GT coaches now work in the Teaching and Learning Department, in the ELA Department, and in the Math Department. So we get to tap into their expertise and think about how we best serve all students, including our advanced learners. We're going to continue to support our students using high-quality resources. All students get access to high-quality instructional materials in ELA, math, and in science. This year, we're so excited about a new science adoption that qualifies under high-quality instructional materials. And so how do we advance learning, considering the rigorous standards our students are required to meet? We're going to be doing that by supporting our general education teachers with small-group instructional support in tier-one instruction, as Dr. Reiswick mentioned, that's what all students get. So what does their core literacy instruction look like, their core math instruction, their core science and social studies instruction look like? How do we support them in small-group instruction in that core period of time? But then also, how do we support them during the intervention period of time? So in our elementary schools, every master schedule has at least a 40-minute segment of time where students are in small groups, receiving specific instruction to meet their unique needs, and that will include our students who need enrichment. Our goal is that we increase the amount of small-group support our students receive. So under the former model, our students who had advanced learning needs met with a GT coach one time per week for a pull-out small-group support session. That would cover academic support, pre-vocational support, so how do we function and interact with the students, how do we make sure we're organized, tending to those gifted characteristics that allow us to interact well in all of our environments and succeed? And then also elevating types of thinking and problem-solving. That is not going away. We are going to, going to continue to do those things in enrichment in both tier-one small group and intervention small group. The service provider is going to change. So instead of that service provider being a GT coach, the service provider is going to be a general education teacher. That general education teacher is still going to have access to all of the fantastic resources that were developed by our GT department. Those resources elevate thinking and problem-solving, but they also extend our high-quality instructional materials. So the GT department, department did a wonderful job of thinking about the high-quality instructional materials we utilize in tier-one instruction, and then tapping into the extension opportunities in those materials. Those materials are not going anywhere, and they're going to be highly encouraged to continue to be used to support students in small-group instruction. Let me make sure I've hit the highlights of my notes, because I haven't looked at them in a minute. Yeah, so I did hit the highlights of the notes, that's great. But the goal is that we increase the amount of small-group support, moving from one time a week to multiple times a week, and thinking about what is the right course of small-group support moving forward. There is going to be no change in how we provide service to our intellectually gifted students. Our intellectually gifted students are those that have been formally evaluated and identified as intellectually gifted under the special education umbrella. Those students will continue to receive the services they have always received, and they will be managed by someone who has the gifted education criteria in the state of Tennessee. That means they either have their gifted endorsement, or they have the Tennessee employment standard. In addition to that, if a direct service provider is not holding one of those two qualifications, they would be under consultation of someone who does. That is required by law, and those things are not changing for intellectually gifted students. Let me go back, make sure. This also has no change for our students in middle school and high school. Our middle schoolers are going to continue to receive access to those honors courses. Our high school students are going to continue to receive access to those advanced academic courses, AP, IB, honors, that is not changing for our middle school and high school students. The biggest impact is at the elementary level. So we should probably also highlight, nope, already said that, we're also going to work toward ensuring that every school has gifted educators in the building. This is what I'm most excited about within this plan, is we are going from a district-directed service, where 14 individuals held their gifted endorsement and provided service across all schools, to ensuring that there's employees at each school site that has their gifted qualifications. So we are partnering with the University of Tennessee to help us reach this exciting, exciting shift, and what we plan to do there is tap into the special ed and the gifted education continuum. So we are going to be increasing the amount of educators who can support us in special education, as well as have the criteria to support our gifted students. These integrated investments will support Knox County schools to better support all of our students, increase our investments in the special education continuum, and refine our service model to be embedded within the school community, rather than be a district-directed service. What questions might you have?
Ms. Bike?
Thank you. I have a few questions. So, well, each person that we have in the district currently and in the future that has the GT endorsement, will they be working in some way in conjunction with this new plan?
My answer on the surface is yes. Currently, our former GT coaches are now part of ELA and math content teams, and they are supporting our principals and our teachers with thinking about this new service model and providing guidance and support to those people at the school level. When we think about increasing the amount of people at the school level with these qualifications, yes, they would be working with students who need advanced learning opportunities.
So with a student that has an IEP, will someone be available for each one of their IEP meetings that has a gifted endorsement?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
They will be case-managed, sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you. They will be case-managed by someone with the proper qualifications, meaning they have the gifted endorsement, and case managers are present at IEP meetings to ensure that we're doing what's right for students.
Okay, sounds good. And then when you say that the general education teacher is the one that will still be kind of carrying these things out, rather than the once-a-week pullout by the coach, when you say general education teacher, do you mean the classroom teacher that is the student's classroom already?
Yes, ma'am, but there's extra. So it could be that teacher's, or that student's classroom teacher, or it could be another teacher on that grade level. So when we think about providing service in the intervention time period, we generally work collectively as a grade-level team to think strategically about how we group students based on their need, and so it may be that the general education teacher is providing service to the advanced learners in, during that time, or it could be one of their colleagues who also teaches that grade level is providing that service based upon the strategic small grouping that happens during that time.
Okay. I just, you know, I always hear, you know, that teachers have so much on their plate, and I want to make sure that this isn't adding yet another thing without something else being taken off.
So what I would say is, it is the general educator's role to think about how we support all students. And in anyone's classroom, they have a continuum of learners, learners who might be struggling, learners who need advanced, unique opportunities, and it is our job to serve all of them well. In addition to that, we are not erasing resources that were previously in the hands of educators. Those resources are staying in the hands of educators, and many of them are developed to the T. So a teacher could pick them up, think about where they are in their tier-one material, choose the material that aligns to what they're teaching in tier-one, and then use that extension or enrichment material in the intervention space. So it's not a development from scratch, it is find the appropriate aligned resource and utilize it well.
So how, I'm curious how this will be communicated to all of the general education teachers in reference that, you know, especially intellectually gifted students, but, and I'm sure that you know this, so I'm just curious for your answer, but that they can learn at different paces and learn differently, it's not just about, like, advanced work?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, so it depends on what's written in the student's IEP. So for intellectually gifted students, if acceleration is written in their IEP and they're getting through content faster, we're obligated to meet that need. And that happens both in the tier-one setting and also in the direct service being provided for the students to reach their goals outlined in their IEP. We also need to have good conversations as collective teams about what is in the best interest of students. Is it accelerating the coursework and going faster, or is it going deeper, ensuring that we can apply both abstract, concrete thinking to complex ideas, and being able to respond to those complex ideas well, using advanced academic language in our speaking and in our writing? And so it's taking that comprehensive vision of a student and really pinpointing what is the right educational course for each individual student who has an intellectually gifted IEP, and ensuring we're carrying that out in every educational setting.
So how is that information being delivered to all the general education teachers?
It's a great question. We had a meeting with our principals last Friday, and again, this morning, for anyone who wasn't able to attend Friday, we shared all of our plans with our principals, and our principals are charged with sharing communication with their staff prior to Thursday when we welcome students on-site.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Ms. Morgan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Dr. Phillips, for the information. I know I've heard from a lot of parents who have been eager to find out what's going to happen next, and so this is really helpful. Just from my understanding, and I think you've answered this, but are you thinking of the students being in groups like they would be for RTI groups and being with different teachers?
Yes. So when you think about the RTI continuum, it spans all students, right? So we have students who have maybe some learning disabilities who have an IEP, then we have students who need tier-two and tier-three intervention, meaning they have some type of knowledge gap that needs to be shored up, and they need to push towards reaching grade-level proficiency. We have students who might need some tutoring, meaning they have some partial understanding of grade level, of grade level standards, but they're not fully mastering that yet, so they need a tutoring touch. We have kids who are showing they understand what we're doing in tier-one instruction, but then we have some on the other end, right? We have students who are showing they understand, but they need to push toward mastery, meaning they need instant recall of what we're doing, so they can free their brain or their cognitive space from having to retrieve information and instantly apply it to more complex thinking and tasks. So we have this space of mastery practice that needs to happen. A lot of times, we skip that as educators, because we think they know it, and when we think they know it, we move on to enrichment. We need to ensure they know it. So this mastery practice needs to exist, and then we move on to enrichment. So how do we take grade-level learning and go deeper, and require more independence at the student level, and require the way in which kids respond to what they're learning to be more rigorous? And then we have intellectually gifted students with IEPs. So the, the RTI continuum actually stretches to meet every student, and so, yes, I am thinking about RTI groups, but in the sense of providing enrichment.
Okay, that's great, thank you. And is, are we changing at all the way that students qualify for GT services, or is that going to stay consistent with how it has been?
Yeah, so let me be completely transparent, we do not have that detail completely determined as of yet. However, we are continuing to have conversations as interdepartmental as we can, so we have academics coming to the table, special ed coming to the table, RTIs coming to the table, and we have talent and acquisition, talent acquisition coming to the table, in order for us to firm up that detail.
Thank you for your work on this. I know nobody wanted to have to do a shift in people's positions, and I know that was such a, a big deal, and have so much heart for all of our educators who had to move into different positions. On the other side of this, I do think this is a great opportunity to reimagine how we are doing the best to serve our gifted students, so thank you for taking that on, because this sounds really great for our students.
You're welcome.
Ms. Templeton?
I just have a couple of questions. Dr. Phillips, thank you for your work on this. This was not expected by any stretch, and I think you've made some really great strides with this. I also had the initial question about qualifying and qualifications and all of that, and you answered that very well, and I appreciate that. I wanted to think through how this looks for an elementary students' day. You said that they currently have 40 minutes, in the old...
All elementary master schedules have 40 minutes.
Right, they have 40 minutes a week, or a day?
A day.
A day. But they were currently being only pulled out once a week. So now we're maximizing the time that's already been built in.
Yes, ma'am.
Is that correct? Okay, I wanted to make sure I had my metrics correct. And then, when you were talking about putting folks with these qualifications in all schools, that includes middle schools, that includes high schools. And how does that work when you're working on content-specific, I mean, when you get to middle school and high school, these are very narrow in content. How does that work?
Yeah, actually, best practice is to serve our gifted education students in their core content area with someone who understands the full spectrum of students present in the classroom. And so when we increase the amount of educators in the gen ed space that have this criteria, they're able to consider the needs of their students on the enrichment side of the spectrum, and embrace and embed opportunities for students to utilize their skills at higher levels in the tier-one classroom. And so part of gifted education learning is learning about those gifted characteristics and being able to apply them in any content area.
Okay. And then giving the teachers the ability in the content to implement that.
Yes.
Taking a little bit of a step back, if, if I'm remembering correctly from emails, there were 14 gifted and talented teachers.
Yes, ma'am.
That were affected.
Yes, ma'am.
By this federal freeze. And I know that in short order, we had to find a place for them, which the team did over, in like 24 hours, which is, wow. How did this reorganization work? You know, how, and now they're all underneath, do we have other positions that are, like, how did this work? And this might be Ms. Templeton's question, how did that happen?
Madam Chair, Ms. Templeton, yes, there were several positions that were funded from titles two, three, and four, not the GT coaches. So the, the ones impacted were the facilitators, the content area facilitators, out, off of Aaron's team, and then the GT coaches were reassigned to Aaron's team.
Okay. All right, thank you. Thank you.
Ms. Fontana Ridley?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just have one question. The resource, you say the resources were created already, so they are available to the teachers to use. My concern is, like Ms. Bike's concern, the teachers already have so much prep that they have to do, and this just adds another level of prep for them. I just want to make sure that they under, that, that we value their time, and we value their work, because I know that they feel like sometimes they have so much, so much, so much that they have to do. The fact that the materials are already there helps quite a bit, but it, it concerns me about the time that they're going to have to spend creating that extra small-group work. That's just, I just wanted to share my concern.
Sure.
I do appreciate you all pivoting because of the funding issues. I just want to make sure that everything is, everybody's taken care of, and everybody's... sure that everything is, everybody's taken care of and everybody's able to do their jobs as well as we've been doing, so.
Yeah, this shift is not absent from support. So, one of the beautiful parts of this transition is that now our content teams have people with gift education expertise and the support we provide at the school level can include that level of support for our teachers. And there shouldn't be much creation at all. What material, the materials have been developed. It's about utilizing them and our team is fully equipped and prepared to support our teachers in utilizing them well and not feeling an extra burden.
So the, when you say the gifted require, not requirement, but the teachers who are going to be working with this in each school, have they received more training or were these already teachers in each school that had this?
So the next step after this is to continue to partner with the Special Education Department and the Talent Acquisition Department to put together a list of people that we can reach out to and seek interest in continuing to pursue their knowledge, their increased knowledge around gifted education and special education. And so we're working on compiling that list now. We will be in touch with stakeholders very soon, in the next coming weeks.
All right, thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am. Reverend Butler?
Thank you, Madam Chair. First of all, thank you all for the effort that you're making. It seems like you took what was seemed like an obstacle and turned it into opportunity and I really love your excitement about it. My question is, at what point do we look at this again? What's the timetable and we expect that how, at what time, because right now, a lot of what you're talking about is projected.
Yes, sir.
So at what point are we saying, what, when do we see success or how do we evaluate success?
That's a wonderful question. Yeah, so a part of just how I operate my department is with constant reflection. So we have ongoing reflective conversations in my department about the work. How is the work going? What are the areas of success? Where are our challenges? How do we approach those challenges, understanding the root cause of those challenges, so that we can approach them strategically and improve over time. So as we're in this initial phase, right, one of our initial goals is to increase the amount of people at the school level with these qualifications. We'll do number checks throughout our partnership with UT to see where are we? Where are we in alignment with each school, having multiple people on the sped side and on the gen ed side? We'll also do some reflective conversations once we increase that school level work to see how's it going, right? Receiving feedback from our principals, receiving feedback from our teachers and our parent stakeholder group to see how we're doing in this shift. I don't anticipate that we'll do that very early on because we haven't increased the school level ownership just yet by increasing the amount of people with the qualifications, but as we increase those qualifications at the school level, initiating some type of reflective scheduling so that we can have those conversations be ongoing conversations.
Will we as a board expect to hear something?
It's a great question. I don't know that I have a very firm answer for you, but what I will say is I think that mid-year, we're going to want to do a checkpoint on where we are. End of the year, we're going to want to do another checkpoint. And then as we start the fall, the work that we're trying to do with UTK is approximately a nine to a 12-month process, okay? So in the fall, we should have those increased people onsite. We're also looking at doing some assessments with people who already have some licensing that allows us to do those assessments to increase people at the school site sooner. So I think once we get to the fall of '26, we'll be able to know how many people we have positioned at the school level and then mid-year of the year of '26, by winter break, being able to say, hey, how's it going now that we have the people in the position at the school sites? You're welcome.
Thanks, that was a good question. Any other questions? All right. Dr. Phillips, you know, I would clone your passion 50 times over. Thank you so much for, you know, taking this on. It was a big challenge and a big obstacle in a program that was well-loved by the parents. I'd heard from several parents. So thank you for taking this on and I think really taking it to the next level. So I'm really excited to see this work.
I'm excited about it. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with all of you.
Thanks. Oh, yes, legislative update. I was going to move into the agenda.
That's okay. Thank you, Madam Chair. That's all good. Not offended at all. Just pass me over. It's all right. Couple things. The deadline for the resolutions, submitting resolutions for the delegate assembly at the November Annual Conference is September 16th. So if there's anybody who wants to submit, that would have to be done before then. Also, a couple of updates on a couple of state-level committees that were established through new legislation. The first one's the State Advisory Committee on Innovation in K-12 education. Their responsibility is examine things like, you know, the volume of state mandated tests, educator evaluations, that kind of thing. They had a meeting on July 24th. They have another one on August 20th. Those are live streamed through the Tennessee General Assembly website and the recordings are there. The second committee that met on July 29th, and the recording can be found in that same place, was the Federal Education Deregulation Cooperation Task Force, whatever the name. But what their responsibility is to prepare for changes to federal funding, federal education funding, and identify funding sources and then what strings are attached to those dollars in light of some of the recent things we've dealt with, with federal funding. That may be an interesting watch. So that is the Federal Education Deregulation Cooperation Task Force. That was on the, it was on July 29th and the information can be found on the Tennessee General Assembly website. Thank you, Madam Chair. That concludes the update.
Thank you, Mr. Triplett. All right then, moving into our regular agenda. Item C, one or two? Three or four? Or number five? Six or seven? Eight or nine? 10 or 11? 12? 13 has been withdrawn. 14 or 15? Oh, yes, Ms. Fontana Ridley?
Thank you. I had a question about 15. In looking at the agreement for the rebranding of West High School, I noticed that the agreement had already been signed by the principal and Ms. Reeves, and I was wondering if that's getting a little ahead of the game. Is that normally done or is that legally binding?
Mr. Dubler, you want to take that one or Corey?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Ms. Fontana Ridley. So, the district has not treated that as legally binding when a contract requires the board's approval. I know in this particular instance, due to discussions with administration, central office administration, that there was some confusion around this because it includes the word proposal. I mean, it is, it is a proposal, but it is also a binding contract upon approval. So there was that. But I mean, the answer to your question is, the board should approve contracts before a principal sign. Now, I mean, there's all kinds of situations where once a contract is approved, principals can sign over sometimes multiple years. But I mean, but that's my understanding in this case. As to whether or not it's effective, I know Dr. Ryswick can correct me if I'm wrong, but I mean, the district is taking the position that it's, that it's not effective until the board approves it.
Thank you.
Sound language is better. No, yeah, we've worked with law department on that and have the same understanding. So I think you're right. That was my recollection too. The proposal was the confusion, but, right, so it's a good question on what you're saying.
Yeah. That's my understanding as well, that we have to, the last say. Ms. Chris? Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. No, no, go on.
I just, I just turned it on.
Okay, yep, Ms. Christie?
And looking at this agreement, this is more just like a cosmetic type issue with logos and signage. Is that correct as far as rebranding goes?
Ms. Christie, Madam Chair, members of the board, thank you for the question and I can answer two items real quick. So yes, that's correct. And West, just like so many of our high schools, has a variety of branding represented throughout the building. They have the One West trademarked logo. And so our understanding through this contract is that the school is really working on kind of bringing that trademarked branding into consistency throughout the building. So One West has one logo and that brand recognition is reflected throughout. And I will also say that, and I'm speaking a little bit on behalf of the school, but we had worked with them on this contract and I believe their signature, while it appears kind of premature on this contract, was, their intention was to reflect that they agreed to the stricken through language. And so I do not think they would even consider their signature as final. So I'm speaking a little bit on their behalf, but I feel pretty confident that's the answer they would give as well.
That's good clarification. Thank you. And until it's signed, it won't be sent to Robin Easter Design until the board signs it as well, just to add that clarification. Yep.
And the other question I had was, there've been some questions about funding, but I've spoken to Ms. Himmelhorn and so to understand correctly, no funds are coming from Knox County Schools to pay for the rebranding. It's all the foundation.
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah, it's from their foundation funds, yes. Yep, Ms. Don.
Yeah, no, my light was actually, it was a question of whether or not we are redoing the entire brand of West or if, or which, I just, that was my question, but I think that Ms. Lawner, it's the consistency factor and hiring somebody to make it consistent across the land makes complete sense to me. Great.
Ms. Morgan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Not to hit a dead end here, can each school choose their own who they want to do a redesign or this type of thing?
Ms. Lawner?
Ms. Morgan, Madam Chair, thank you for the question, members of the board. So we do have a contract for trademark logo design. So while the logo development is done in concert with a vendor, it would be at the school's discretion as to whether or not they want to perform kind of a brand audit to see how well that brand is represented throughout their campus. And that's really what West is doing here.
Mr. Dubler?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I would just add to what Ms. Lawner's saying is that the district has spent some time and effort to make sure that each school has at least one trademarked logo. And that was one of the changes to this agreement was that that logo cannot be changed without school district approval, so.
Awesome. Okay, any more questions? All right, moving on. 6A for policies. And we did get an email about approving this on first reading, just because it does deal with the cellphone, the mobile device policy as well. So that way we can make sure that's, that's done by the school, school year. All right. Moving on then, 7A or B? C or D? E or F? Or G? All right, moving on then to contracts. 8A or B? C or D? Moving on then to regular agenda items. 9A or B? C or D? Ms. Templeton?
I have a question that is probably for Dr. Adams regarding the Sturkey Elementary School project, because I'm coming in on this a little bit on the back end. And so I'm just asking for historical, how this happened. From what I understand, and please correct me where I am wrong, the original plan was for classrooms as well as new spaces, renovation as a whole. And over the course of time, and that was like a '22, '21, '22, something like that. And then that did not immediately happen and now we are only doing the renovation portion of it. And there is some building. When I looked at the schematic last month, it's clearly, we're adding building space with encore and things like that. But then there's $4.2 million left over. We want to transfer that to Hall. So I'm curious if I have the timeline correct and what I'm missing, which I'm sure there is something in there. And then why we are moving it as opposed to using that money where it was originally promised?
Madam Chair, members of the board, thank you, Ms. Templeton. So typically what we do is when we have any budget overages, we look and we identify current projects that are within the capital plan. I will give kudos to Mr. Shover and the work that he's done. He is an architect by trade. And so when we looked at the design for Sturkey Elementary, what we identified was when we looked at maximum capacity and programmatic capacity and we looked at projected numbers, it just did not fit the scope of work. And so part of the reasons why we looked at the redesign is it came in well over budget. I believe we were looking at 26 million is what it came in at. And then we quickly identified the need in the school. And so we identified office spaces, a new gym. We talked about special education classrooms that were not currently at the school, which we were able to re-envision with the redesign. And so it identified all the needs at the school level. And then when we, when we rebid it, it came in significantly under budget. And so just again, looking at the market, it's up and down, as you can see, even though Sturkey Elementary came in significantly under budget. The halls came in over budget. And so again, normally what we do is when we identify any savings within the capital plan, we reallocate those funds to projects that are within the capital improvement plan budget.
This may be something that you and I could take offline, but I'm curious what the, how do you get to capacity? What the capacity number is?
So that's a, it's a combination of things. So we look at, we work real closely with Ms. Himmelhorn's team and we look at the staffing formula, but we also look at like what it looks like, this capacity within the building. So there's maximum capacity and there's programmatic capacity, which basically you're looking at not really getting into the schedule, but how many teachers you have, how many students you have within classrooms. And then we also identify areas of needs, whether it's special education or ELL or any of those services as well. So it's a, we have a formula for it. And so we've really worked on that for the past three years and we've worked with teaching and learning and we worked, again, with Ms. Himmelhorn and her team to identify. And it looks different across the board for different schools. So we have more of a standard and we can share that information. I've had, I believe Kat has asked me quite a few times of some of the schools, her schools, to look at what the programmatic and maximum capacity looks like. And so when members of the board ask that question, we identify those areas and we send that information to board members.
Okay. And I can request that. So is Sturkey at programmatic capacity or max capacity or they're under both of those so they don't need these classrooms?
So the wing that was going to add, I think it was 11 classroom wing at the time, they would have been well over capacity if we had added that wing to the school. And so we were looking at identifying a need. And so the need was not to add an additional wing. But again, we did need to create some space within the school and so we identified those areas and added those spaces.
Dr. Ryswick, do you want to chime in too?
Thank you, Madam Chair. If I could just piggyback off what Dr. Adams said, recalling, there was, there was a plan years ago that was looking at kind of, I think it was called, I'm trying to remember, Northwest Corridor or something like that was the idea.
I think it was the North Knox Solution.
North Knox Solution, yes. Well, it was a, and I think at that time, I was the academics guy. What little I remember from that was, there were, there was, there were a series of schools in that kind of corridor that they were going to do different renovations to understanding where the population was. And if I'm remembering correctly, Bricky was part of that, Adrian Burnett was part of that, Enskip was part of that, like all in, you know, I mean, they don't touch exactly, but that kind of whole space. that kind of whole space. Those projects were done and continuing to monitor the, the scope of kids moving in or the projected scope from enrollment that we get, that actually, I think, ended up relieving as those were done, what they thought the growth was going to be. So by the time, I remember Dr. Adams brought that to me a couple of years ago and was like, we don't have any projections that are showing what they thought initially when Sturkey was going to be built, what they needed. So there wasn't a need to spend that money to put that extra wing on there, because there wasn't the, the projected enrollment to go there. Now, again, the assumption would be that the additions to Bricky and Inskip and the new Adrian Burnett absorbed some of that need in that, in that general area. So in that, we brought back to the board and the capital plan at that point that there wasn't a need for that. But to your point, worked with Principal Doran there too at the time, there were some commitments made to upgrade the school. And I think that's what Dr. Adams worked with her on as well. And that's where the gym and the, and the office complex and the, I think, CDC classroom and a couple of other things were still left in there for that portion. But the, the need for the enrollment wasn't there anymore. So that was kind of what was brought back to the board, maybe two years ago. Everything feels like it was two years ago to me. Sometime around that was brought back. So I think what it was, there was an initial kind of broad net about what that corridor would need over time. But I think as those projects came in and enrollment shifted, there didn't seem to be the need to build it at that point. So that was kind of what was brought back to the board, was how do we upgrade the school, but didn't necessarily need the other wing of capacity.
Right. Is there any way that I can look at just population data by school over the course of the last five years? Like, I'd be really interested just to see how those growth numbers have shifted, just for my own personal benefit, you know, just the makeup of these schools. I think that would be really interesting. And then you and I could sit down and talk about programmatic and max capacity, the difference in how all of that pans out.
Absolutely. We work with Knox Knoxville Planning, and we look at projected numbers. So we do have that over a course of five years. And that's with our transportation department and enrollment. And so we can certainly share that information with you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Awesome. Thank you. All right. Moving on then, I don't know if we said D, D or E. Ms. Bike?
Thank you. So speaking to E, this is obviously a resolution. And I know that some could think, you know, like, well, we've got the funds now, so why is this still here? But I think we can all agree that kind of the last month has been tumultuous with the ups and downs and the roller coaster. And I would really love to not go through this roller coaster again. And as was mentioned earlier, you know, to be considered for the delegate assembly, that's something that I would like for this to be considered for. I've worked with TSBA and their law department in creating this. I've also worked with our central office in creating this, but mostly talking about kind of, you know, those federal funds that fund IDEA and all of the titles, title programs, and how important they are. And, you know, I talked to some other districts, and it's, you know, it's easy for the community to see like, oh, well, this other district isn't as worried as we are. But when we're thinking about other districts might lose $150,000 versus us at almost $4 million, you know, that's quite a bit of a difference. And definitely with, you know, it's been brought up so many times that I think Knox County is so unique in that we have urban, suburban, and rural communities that we're serving. And, you know, we're talking about facilities and everything we need. I think we really can't afford to lose any more money. And I know that several members of the General Assembly had mentioned last year, and they even did a study about the state's capacity to take on this funding. So I would really love them to, for them to dig into that as kind of, you know, is outlined in here. So if anyone has any questions, I'm happy to. But I also really wanted this to be a space holder for us to kind of discuss this and have it as an agenda item, because I think the community is so worried about what we're going to do, how we're looking at this. And my one question that kind of comes from this is, now that we've kind of restructured, repurposed all of those positions, what will we do with the funds now? And in that plan, is that something that the board has to approve?
Gary? Ms. Templeton?
I have a question.
Yeah.
For you.
Okay.
Is this something that, sorry, I was a little loud. Is this something that you are asking us to support, to send to the state legislature to say, we want you to fight for this money?
Yes.
We just want you to fight for the money if the money gets cut?
Yes.
This is what we're asking?
Yeah, it would be my hope that this would be asking them to, in the, you know, I guess sometimes like that, in the whereas, in the urging them to take immediate action. I don't think that immediate action is always, you know, go find the money, but it can also be advocate for the money. And that's why it's left a little vague of like, that it's not a directive of what to do, but kind of like, please make sure that we get this.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Fight for us.
Yes, fight for us.
Call people.
Yeah, like, we need this money, please.
I would like an answer to her question about, you know, when this money is reallocated, will that come back to the board for approval?
Sure. And thank you, Ms. Templeton, thank you, Ms. Bike. And, and Ms. Templeton and I corresponded on this a little earlier as well. And I've, I have checked with several folks, you know, Dr. Roswick, Ms. Himmigorn, you know, about this issue. And traditionally, what's happened is when these title monies are brought to the board, it's more of an application slash plan as opposed to a final document. Obviously, the contracts that are brought before the board are in final form, but these types of things are not. And then what, what happens invariably is that once the money is state-approved and eventually awarded, there are some changes, you know, in the, in the plan itself, just based upon what funding is provided. So what I looked into when you had asked the, the original question, Ms. Templeton, was, you know, is there some requirement, is there some, something in the law that says, oh, okay, since there's this amount of change, does it, does it kick in an automatic re-review, if you will? I couldn't find anything like that. But, but what I would say is that, and in talking to administrators, is that, you know, it is, it is, it is great to be transparent about it, talk about it with the board, and then the board has every right to take this up again and re-review the plan pursuant to whatever changes are made, if it, if it so chooses. So.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I guess, just a couple of comments, questions, and Mr. Triplett, you might know this. So I know that maybe it was year before last, the, they were talking at the state about wanting to not accept any federal education dollars. Did that get held up in the Finance Committee because they could not create a fiscal note? Do you know?
I don't know the why, but yeah.
Yeah, I, I know that there was some thing, some hangup when it came to creating that fiscal note and where that money would come from. I do think that there is a chance that, the more likely scenario is this might prompt the revisiting of, do we want to accept federal education money? Because many felt very strongly about that at the time. As far as, and I, and I appreciate all the reasons this is here. I do think that in looking at how we fund these positions, and we were very intentional when we had the ESAR money in saying, we do not need to fund a lot of positions with this, because it will not be coming back, and we don't want to lose people. I do think there is some wisdom in rethinking how we do some of those processes, because nobody wants to be in this. I mean, this has been a horrible situation to be in. And I know that no one has the desire to be here again.
Thank you for that, Ms. Christie. Ms. Bike? Or did you have?
No, I just, I just left it on in case anyone had questions.
Sounds good. Anyone else? All right. Well, then moving on then to public forum, Mr. Triplett.
Yes, we have one speaker, Lance McCold. She'll state her name and county residence. She'll have three minutes.
Okay. I'm Lance McCold, Knox County, Madam Chair, members of the board. I wanted to speak about the proposed changes to J-191, the policy. But before I do it, I wanted to comment on the, Ms. Bike's resolution. You know, the, the things that these federal funds fund are important things that our schools do. And I think it's totally appropriate to ask the state to backfill if the federal funds are pulled. The state in this last legislative session committed to spending almost $150 million on vouchers. And if we can afford to spend that, we can afford to make up monies that the federal government decides not to spend. That's a certainly, you know, that spending on vouchers is a total waste. Now, in of that, I want to say, 191 brings us, is interesting, it caught my attention because you instituted because of the new policy on cellphone usage. And I saw there that it came in this category that includes suspending kids. You know, it's got A, B, and C, add an A for real minor things. But the whole idea that a student would be suspended for not putting his cellphone away, you know, this is ridiculous. Now, I don't know if that's the intent, if it's, it was ridiculous. If a kid can't, didn't put his cellphone away, then you take it away from them. It's already in J-240, you know? So there's no reason to ever suspend somebody for that. Now, of course, if they have the phone and they won't give it up, you know, you get a whole different kind of behavior issue. But it doesn't, it's not a cellphone issue, it's now a behavior issue. So as I thought about this, I thought, well, this is crazy. Why would we suspend a kid for this, this new thing? But then I see really what the problem is with J-191, and, and this particular part of it, but probably more broadly, is you've got a whole bunch of different behaviors. That particular, this, this particular thing involves several different kinds of behaviors that are related to internet, to branded to cellphones. It's all jumbled up together. And as a result, you have things that are very serious, like, you know, harassment and bullying, that are blended in with something like, some kid forgot to put his cellphone away, or looked at it during lunch, or something like that. So we need to, we need to clean this up, because this is going to be very confusing to both to the families, the students. And when somebody gets suspended because the, the teacher looks at this thing and says, oh, this kid didn't, so, you know, it's been three times and I need to suspend him. I think you need to give that some closer attention. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. That concludes public forum.
Thank you, Mr. Triplett. Moving on to board forum, Albert?
I would like to talk about what the gentleman there just said. I want to say thank you, first of all, because that's something that I had an issue with as well. I didn't bring it up for whatever reason, but I think that clarifying the distinct, like making a distinction between different types of electronic device misuse would be really helpful, because like, again, bullying and harassment, cyberbullying, all of that is like one thing that should take like a stronger course of action. But, and I know it's not likely that anyone would ever get suspended, or any like administrator out of school would suspend a child for having a phone out in school. But just making sure that there's a distinction there that says like, you can actually do that, I think would be really helpful and give a lot of kids like some confidence there. So that's just my piece about that policy.
Thank you, thanks. Reverend Butler?
Just thoughts and prayers and wishes for a wonderful school year for all of our students throughout Knox County.
Ms. Templeton?
Yeah, I want to thank all the people who passed out school bags last week. I was unable to be there, but I know several people who were recipients of bags. And so thank you to all those who were able to serve in that way. I have a rising freshman, a rising sixth grader. We are moving up in big ways in my house. And so I feel all the feels, along with all of the parents and the students who are going with to school this week. Wish you well. This is going to be a great school year and looking forward to it.
Awesome. And both of yours have orientation tomorrow.
They do.
Woo, yes. Ms. Fontana Ridley?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to express my appreciation for the work done at the Teacher Depot. I worked there on Saturday for part of the day, helping to restock shelves and talk to people and talk to teachers and see how they're feeling. And I just wanted to thank several entities for being there, helping Salsa Rita with their donation of a reading incentive bookmark. I think it's like, the student reads five books, they bring it in and they get something at Salsa Rita's. The Knoxville Teachers Federal Credit Union supplied us with pizza for lunch. Partners in Education volunteers, there were several, and I don't know that I got to meet all of them. Tommy Watson, the Region Three Supervisor, was there, and he was busting his butt. And our two lifetime volunteers, Connie Smith, she brought her grandson Kayden to help, and he worked really hard too, and Trish Russell. Without those two women, I think it would have been a lot more difficult on Saturday to make sure things ran smoothly. So I just wanted to express my appreciation for them. Thank you.
That's awesome, thanks. Mr. Triplett?
To Ms. Christie's point, I think the end result of that, that legislative stuff was this committee was the end result. I think that's what they're investigating. But I can look a little further, and if I have anything else I can bring in. But look forward to a great start to the school year. My kids are done, so I don't have any of that. Exciting time, I know.
Ms. Bike?
Thank you. I can't believe it's time to go back to school. Thank you so much to our teachers, educators, staff, everyone in the schools and our central office for all the hard work that you do, even over the summer, to prepare for these kids to come back to school and learn at their potential and full capacity. So it's so exciting, you know? I've also been doing all the school shopping, as I have a rising sixth and eighth grader. Yeah, so it's pretty exciting, and the summer went by too quickly. But then also, I just wanted to kind of like say that I appreciate our board chair and vice chair and the work that you guys have done over the last two years, and that I would just like to voice my want for the opportunity to potentially serve as vice chair this next year and/or the legislative representative. Thank you.
Awesome. Thanks, Ms. Bike. Ms. Morgan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This time of year always makes me want the bouquet of sharpened pencils, you've got mail throwback. It's exciting, and it's always fun to find out who our teachers are going to be for the year. And I've gotten to be part of some really great conversations with some staff members. And got to go to lunch today with the coaches at Farragut High School and see all of them excited and ready for the year ahead and the season ahead, and just lots of excitement right now. So echoing everybody else's thoughts and wishing everybody a great start to the school year.
Mr. Wright?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just looking forward to another great school year. Appreciate everybody's hard work here, all the administration, all the teachers at all the schools. It's going to be fun. Looking forward to it. So I'm a rising sophomore, and I feel old, so.
Ms. Christie?
A rising sophomore that can drive, right? I mean, that makes it, that's that whole other level. Yeah, I just want to welcome everyone back. And also, as someone who lives in the parent responsibility zone of two schools, just thank our law enforcement partners and remind everyone to be very mindful that those flashing yellow lights will be coming back on if they're not already on, and that we will have a lot of students walking and out there on the roadways, and just to be mindful of that and watching out for them.
That's a good one. That's a good reminder, and stop at the school buses that are stopped as well. I just want to, I echo what everybody else said, I just wish everybody a good start to the school year. I don't know where the summer went, every year I say, this is the fastest summer, but I truly think that this summer went the fastest. Both of my kids are at back-to-school events tonight, so I'm excited to go home and see how those went, and looking forward to another school year. And with that, we are adjourned, I'll see y'all Thursday.